Welcome to the May 2nd, 2023 Board of Education Regular Business Meeting. May I please have a motion to call the Regular Business Meeting to order? So moved Mike, second Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
May I please have a motion to move into Executive Session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining negotiations? So moved Jen, second Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we will return shortly. All right, can I have a motion to move out of Executive Session and back into Public Session, please? So moved Shanna, second Charlie, all in favor? Aye. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
So moved Linda, second. Shanna, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and with that, we're going to move on to our student liaisons.
On April 22nd, the girls' flag football team made their way to the AdPro Sports Training Center for a clinic with the Buffalo Bills. They got to work with actual players and coaches to touch up their skills. This is our first year with flag football being a part of Schrader Spring Sports, and they are doing extremely well as they are undefeated so far in their season. Our spring sports have been busy this April and are going full swing into May to finish off their seasons. On Saturday, April 22nd, our softball team hosted a triple header, and both lacrosse teams celebrated Lax Day hosting the elementary school lacrosse players for scrimmages. The girls' flag football team had their home opener against Grease Arcadia on Saturday, April 29th, and will be playing Spence Port tonight. Two spring athletes participated in Senior Signing Day last week. Shelby B. is committed to Rider University for track and field, and Griffin M. is committed to Roberts Westland for volleyball. For the past few months, Schrader students proficient in more than one language have been preparing for the seal of bilinguism. These exceptional students prove themselves fluent in English and a second language by first choosing a topic of interest, completing extensive research, writing an essay, and then giving a presentation they prepared in their respective language in front of a panel. The second language was either used at home or learned through courses at school. Because of their hard work and dedication, they have earned a medal and a stamp on their diploma. We are very proud of their accomplishments and appreciation of other cultures. This month marks the last two Women in STEM meetings of the year. The club has had another successful year, not only bringing in successful women to talk about their careers, but also exploring and experimenting with STEM-based activities. This Wednesday, May 3rd, is their after-school party featuring Science Jeopardy with snacks. Their final meeting will be held on Wednesday, May 17th, to bring in one last guest speaker of the year. We are so grateful for the enrichment that this club has brought to Schrader. The class of 2023 officers have been selling senior ball tickets in the library for the past two weeks. This week is everyone's last chance to buy them on Thursday and Friday for $75 each. We are excited to bring our senior class to the Winter Garden this year on Saturday, May 20th. Around the World in 80 Days is the play that's being, is the production, and the cast and crew will be making their debut on May 4th, 5th, and 6th. Tickets are $10 and can be purchased online or at the door. Good luck to the Schrader Theater Company this weekend. We wish them the best of luck. Freaky Friday was featured at Thomas from April 20th to the 22nd. Actors and musicians from Schrader and Thomas worked together to put on the musical. There was even a talented young Willink actor playing the role of Fletcher, the main character's little brother. Congratulations to the cast and crew for another successful Webster production. Schrader has completed another successful season with the American Computer Science League this year. Five students competed at the intermediate level and four competed at the senior level. Four students have qualified for the American Computer Science League Finals and will be competing on May 27th. We wish them the best of luck for their final competition of the year. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. This week, we celebrate the hard work of educators everywhere and their sacrifices to nurture future generations. The PTSA is currently collecting food donations for Schrader, Goal, and UPK staff to show our appreciation for them. Thank you to everyone here for all that you do for the district. We appreciate your devotion to our One Webster family. Our Webster jazz musicians had the privilege of working with Professor Bob Snyder from the Eastman School of Music last week. They went through two days of clinics, building up their improv and musical creativity. They ended the clinic with combined Schrader and Thomas band. Last Friday, Schrader celebrated its seniors and their post-college decisions with their annual decision day. Our new library had a photo wall set up along with cake and refreshments. Students wore attire representing their future plans and made little flags to be hung on the wall in the senior lounge. We are excited to see where everyone will go, and we know that they will make Webster proud. That is all for this month, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and I hope that you all are having great starts to your week. AP exams have begun, and students are gearing up for last-minute studying. I'm so sorry, I'm having technical difficulties here. Okay. AP exams have begun, and students are gearing up for last-minute studying and doing what they can to succeed. Make sure to wish your students good luck. Moving forward, congratulations to this year's World Language Honor Society Class of 2023 for continuing on in their language and overcoming the continuous challenges with learning a new language. Thank you to Ms. Juris for organizing the event, and to one of our own Thomas alum, Elizabeth Cole, for being our keynote speaker, and for pouring out her linguistic wisdom onto our students. Next up, teams from Schrader and Thomas participated in this year's National Lockhead Martin Code Quest programming quest competition. Teams had two and a half hours to solve 25 challenging problems, problems ranging from five points to 100 points apiece. Two teams from Schrader and two teams from Thomas competed in the advanced level, bringing back Webster, one of six trophies. A total of 24 teams participated, and one of Schrader's teams finished in second place, scoring 130 points. Congratulations to the advanced teams, members of David Y. and Jessica F., and then Group Two, Garrett M. and Stefan M., and also to Thomas's advanced group of Quentin A., Ella E., Jenna D., Ryan M., and Taya M. Going into our music department, Thomas Jazz Department students had the pleasure of working with guitarist Bob Schneider from the Eastman School of Music, who then participated within a concert with Schrader students. It was quite awesome, and congratulations to everyone who participated. Next on to our junior prom is this weekend, and students will have to be in school May 5th as well. Also, to our sophomores and juniors, you are now eligible to participate in our Link Leaders Program. Thank you, and that's all from me. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Ladies. Thanks, Cindy, thanks, Lord.
Hello again, everyone. It's a pleasure to be back. I can't believe this is our eighth report this year. You believe that? All right, we keep our promise. You guys know safety is so important, and we've talked about it so many times. But on a really cool note, safety on the field trips that are going on, our WTA elementary members, they've been busy taking kids to the Memorial Art Gallery, Susan B. Anthony, the North Ponds Park to discuss Earth Day, what a better place to have a classroom, scavenger hunts that are taking firehouses. Our middle school has attended some conference, our science Olympiad went to Syracuse to compete at the state level. And our high school, they just jumped continents. Our WTA advisors, our French classes went to Quebec, and our technology engineering classes went to Japan. As you know, those trips are planned years in advance. Well, and then they took a break. Locally, we attended the Red Wings game, the alternate education programs, as well as the business programs. They had earlier games, it was phenomenal to be outside. Somehow, we hit the one day it did not rain. Some of us need sunscreen. In-house empowering students, our middle school, we created an environment where our students can take the lead, and it's not the first time. We had four eighth graders direct Peter Pan. What a successful show it was. Our National Arts Society, Honor Society, their advisor now has them hosting, for the first time in Webster, teachers and staff to make glaze and handmade ceramic bowls. They are hosting in-house the Empty Bowl Event. It started today. They have multiple workshops, I'll send it to you. And you can make your own bowl, and then proceeds are going to go to our in-house Webster pantries, our Webster Community Chests, and also the Hope Houses. Our WTA Chair Linda, PTSA Chair Linda Law, you guys know, they are always busy, unbelievably busy. It's wonderful. CAD was a huge success, WTA endorsed. We were behind the scenes, making sure kids signed up. We were behind the scenes, making sure things were gotten right to Schrader. What a great place to have it. Our WTA cares, I promised, our member chair is sitting behind us, and I promised I would let other people talk about him tonight, as well as a very earned congratulations to Diana M. as well. What I will share is what we do in the classroom with our WTA kids, well, WTA kids and members. Our elementary school is writing to Haiti. Our fourth graders are going to be pen pals with a school in Haiti. Our middle school are getting together with the high school teams and cleaning up fields and playgrounds around the community. Our high school is heavily involved, even in the middle of an AP schedule, with day of caring, as well as multitude of other ways to clean and help around the entire area of Rochester, not just our Webster home. Our PAC Chair, wow, they just got back. Our WTA PAC Chair and delegates were at the NICE Representative Assembly, where they represented us well. Can't wait to hear the feedback from there. We also, in our CIA classes, in our social studies classes, we have kids using their voices and registering to vote, who haven't already, and 13 years ago, they were kindergartners, and now they're going to vote on the budget, so it's pretty cool. Pretty cool way to say. Kelly Croft with our Pro-Cro, listen to the books that were read this year by our staff. The Writing Revolution, The Art and Science of Teaching Reading, Behaving Solutions for the Inclusive Classroom, Ten Things Every Child With Autism Which Is You Knew. No More Meltdowns, as well as the National Geographic magazines came back into play so kids can enhance some of the supplemental units they had. In conclusion, I want to tell you about librarians that came from Bosie's too, to see some of our secondary librarians, ones behind. She gets to share about the Oak Tree, and came here to see. We welcome people, we always have our doors open safely, and welcoming people to share what we're doing, see what we're doing, and enhance what we're doing. It's a two-way street. I wish all of you a very happy Mother's Day to all the mothers, the wives, and those representatives in your family. Hope you have a great week, and I'll see you in June.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, come on up.
I don't have one, you all know who I am. I'm sorry, Paul Benz, because I would love to ask.
Yeah, be Paul Benz.
I'm going to be Paul Benz.
I'm here from Oak Tree, I'm Wendy Sardella, if I haven't met you. So I'm going to do a little intro, and then I'm going to pass this over to Kim. So in 2001, the first recipients were recognized with the Oak Tree Award for Teacher Excellence, and in the more than 20 years this once-in-a-career recognition has celebrated 46 different educators. This year's recipients are Diana M. and Craig Johnville, and I get the honor of speaking about Diana. Diana was nominated by parent Karen Talbot, who describes Diana as a leader in the community who believes in positive reinforcement and not getting caught up in mistakes. Diana has been teaching for 24 years in Webster, she is a lead teacher, she served in her building's PTSA Executive Committee, coordinates the fifth-grade yearbook, and is the co-chair of the PTSA Holiday Helping Hands Event. One of her letters was from Tiffany Polino, a colleague, and she writes that Diana has a true passion for music, and it shows in her teaching. She is able to inspire and engage students of all ages and abilities, instilling in them a love of music that will stay with them for a lifetime. She has a remarkable ability to connect with students on a personal level, helping them to build their confidence and self-esteem, which is also encouraging them to strive for excellence in all aspects of their life. I can't think of anything that's a higher compliment.
And on behalf of the committee, I just wanted to say, we, congratulations to all the staff that were nominated. They have amazing resumes and careers, and if we could pick everybody, we would. And clearly, Diana and Craig rose to the top as we debated who to choose. It's very, it's not easy.
There were 40 nominations.
Yeah. So, congratulations to everyone. So Craig was nominated by a parent, M.J. Stark, and she wrote, "My son looks forward to going to school every day, now to see his teachers and Mr. Johnville, who he calls his lawyer." He calls him this because he knows Mr. Johnville is there to advocate for him and help him with any and all issues he may have, be having in any subject. Craig has been teaching for more than 20 years, is involved in every aspect of the Webster learning community. He is currently the PTSA Secretary and on the WTA Executive Board as the Chair for Care. He still finds time to be on his building DEI Committee, is the Care Club Advisor, and is a mentor teacher. Like, I don't know how Craig spends any time outside of what he's doing. Teaching colleague Denise Warren wrote, "When I was asked to write this recommendation for Craig, two words came to mind: compassion and commitment. Craig is an exceptional educator. Craig is committed to all that he does. He loves Webster and has dedicated his life to making it a better place for everyone." And knowing Craig, I second those sentiments.
Thank you for allowing us to acknowledge.
Yeah, I just want to add that, first of all, we, like you said, Kim, congratulations, and every year, you get 30, 40, 50 sometimes, and it's not an easy job. So kudos to the committee for putting the time and the effort, reading all the recommendations, and all of our staff that recommends, and all the parents and the kids. But what an honor. We were able to, I was able to be there the day that you guys got your surprise, and it was fantastic. So thank you for the invite to come along, Mr. Wojcik and Mrs. Sardella. It was really great, and I loved being there. But again, the last thing I would say is, watching you guys with kids is what's magical. And so, you're amazing with your colleagues, and you're amazing what you do as an educator, but watching you with kids is really where you light up, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Take a picture.
Let's do it.
Kristin's right over here, so tell us where to go.
All right, Paul, I'm putting your sign back. You pretended to be here.
Do you want us?
Usually just you.
It's just you.
Yeah, yeah.
Way to get out of it, everybody.
It's always just you.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say. I don't think so. I know, I know. I mean, at this point, my dad's at the house getting kids, so.
Right there, actually.
Yeah, there you go.
I wouldn't forget, but I just, you know.
He's going to be so startled, right?
What do you mean? Oh. Why are you talking about me?
It's so great.
It is.
So it goes in their building for the entire year. They can take it home, but then it gets back in the building for the year until the next round.
It's kind of like the Stanley Cup, you get to keep it, it's going to travel.
Yeah, it's so cool, though. What an honor.
We'll get a message till later.
No, you're fine, we're still, we're all ahead of schedule.
It's hard to follow that.
I know.
Oh, no, it is.
There we go.
Yep, you go.
All right, all right, now I'm going to move on to the next part, but before I do, I also just want to say congratulations to the families of both Diana and Craig. Thank you very, very much. It is a definite celebration for the whole family, so. And we're fortunate to have those, both Craig and Diana, as our representatives.
You know what to do.
All right, and speaking of being thankful, all of this week and into next week, so just a little clarification for everybody here, there is a little, some people think that next week is Staff Appreciation Week, some people think it's this week, so we're celebrating in either of those weeks, and maybe both, so we'll just kind of do that, just so everybody's kind of aware of that. But as you heard from our student liaisons as well, most of our, most of our schools are celebrating staff appreciation this week. So, and thank you to our incredible PTSAs who have once again come up with creative ways for acknowledging our extraordinary staff members at all of our buildings, and we continue to be grateful to our staff and the different, and the different invaluable roles that they play in our district. So thank you for your continued commitment to our students, and please enjoy the festivities of the week. So, and next up, it's, we're going to move on to campus news, and we have two guests with us here today. First, we have Principal Kate Hesler from Schlegel Road Elementary, and Principal Paul Benz from Webster-Schrader High School, who are going to share a few things that are going on with elementary and with secondary schools. So Kate, you start.
Hi, everybody. So I'm Kate Hesler, principal at Schlegel, and I wanted to start, we have our mascots, our beloved mascots at all of our seven elementary schools, but I also wanted to introduce you to this little friend of mine that I brought, and their name is Gigi, and they're like our honorary mascot at all of our seven elementary schools. Clem South is the Penguin, so they kind of get double Penguin mascots, but Gigi is a common presence at all of our elementary schools. And so I wanted to take this opportunity for the campus news to tell you a little bit more about Gigi, where Gigi comes from, and how our kids are so excited about learning with Gigi. So Gigi is part of our ST Math program, and in a nutshell, it's a computer-based program for kids to practice their problem-solving. And when I think about sort of the evolution of technology-based learning, from when I started my career and even before, up till where we're at now, we really went from, you know, years past when maybe we taught kids something, and then maybe we put them on a computer game to practice that skill. So if it was math, and we taught them how to add, we might put them on a computer game then afterwards to sort of practice that math facts and get a little bit faster, get a little bit better, but things have really come a long way. And so now, with programs like ST Math, it really is involved in the active teaching and the active learning that our kids go through, you know, alongside the teacher. So I wanted to just share a little bit about that, and to start, a couple of pieces of research that we've kind of really latched on to in understanding the way that this game works. So you see, games make brains grow, and there really have been some interesting MRI types of technology studies where, you know, they've got kids hooked up, and they kind of see what are, what pathways are lighting up as they play these games, and how does that really build those connections in their brain? And so that's been kind of exciting, as you know, the medical field and those imaging pieces have progressed to really understand how that works, but also just this idea of games teaching productive struggle. And so if you have kids at home who play games, like I do, you might have this wonder of, you know, why don't they give up when they fail? It's part of that psyche of playing these games, where they kind of expect to fail. It's part of the game, and even back, like, old games that I might maybe use to play when I was a kid, you didn't expect to know how to do it the whole way, the whole first time through. But these games give kids ample opportunity to kind of encounter problems, work through them, get feedback, eventually be successful, and then incorporate that into how they, you know, work through the rest of the game. So this problem-solving process, the ST Math program also, so kids do work on it on their own, but then they also work on it with their whole class. And so we'll often see teachers working through a couple of puzzles, we call them puzzle talks with the whole class, and they'll ask them, you know, okay, what do we think? What do we notice? What do we wonder? Oh, you think that? Well, how can you justify or predict? And so that language of this process becomes something that they use as a whole class to discuss, to work in partners, so it really becomes sort of a collaborative piece that they work through together, as well as on their own. This year, all of the principals and many of our instructional TOSSAs really decided we wanted to make this recommitment to using the tool and gaining knowledge about it, sharing that knowledge with our staff, and so we had the opportunity to have a representative from ST Math come and speak with us, and she shared some of the things that they've seen that help schools do that really effectively are really the three recommendations up on the screen. So set some expectations, establish routines to monitor data, and then our favorite, celebrate often and wildly. So just to speak really briefly to each of those, around the setting expectations, we have shared with our staff some of the guidelines around how much time, you know, should kids be spending on this, and teachers have been able to incorporate that into the schedule throughout the day, some ask their kids to do some of it for homework, but really just having an idea about how much time to spend, and then that translates over the course of the year to them finishing what's called their journey. So our friend Gigi travels on a journey, and if you spend about this amount of time, you know, each week, you'll get to the end of the journey by the end of the year. So that's a nice way for kids to kind of be like, oh, we know we're 50% done with our journey, you know, in the middle of the year and so forth. As far as the establishing routines to monitor data, we're able to get some reports each week, just how things are going, but what's really exciting and what the kids are really aware of are the monthly challenges that our instructional TOSSA team have put together, and so each month, they'll send out an email to all of the teachers and say, hey, this month, you know, we're to earn your stickers, to earn your Gigi trophies, this is the challenge, and it varies each month, but that's something that they help us track, and the kids are proud of, and teachers have different ways of displaying that in their classrooms. These are some examples from around the schools, so the bulletin board on the left is from State Road, just celebrating some of the classes that had reached those mile markers. And then the other one is from Schlegel, where we had some fun with the March Mathness theme and paired up some of our teams of teachers and classes together to have a little friendly competition in the spirit of March and bracket competition and so forth. And so then for celebrating wildly, I mean, this is where we've really just had some fun. So on this beautiful sunny sunrise morning, this is myself, and you can see my assistant principal, Mr. Cody Miller, holding up a laptop here, because I'm delivering our morning announcements outside with larger-than-life Gigi behind me to just share some celebrations. And then over here, you see at Plank North, so that's their mascot of the pioneer, but then you also see the Penguin over here, and so both mascots present to present to some children about their achievements in ST Math at a school-wide celebration. We celebrate Gigi's birthday in the elementary schools, and I actually, I wanted to just tell you what those little notes say, so one of them says, "I kept trying to get it right. I got it right." And then the other one says, "This time when I was getting frustrated, Gigi helped me." So setting some goals, and then just really getting into the spirit of, you know, this character and how Gigi plays into that. And then finally, a few more pictures. So you may have seen Gigi at Community Arts Day, but really just floated a bit around our schools last month and visited students, visited with classes, and met families at Community Arts Day as well. their own. This year, all of the principals and many of our instructional TOSSAs really decided we wanted to make this recommitment to using the tool and gaining knowledge about it, sharing that knowledge with our staff. And so we had the opportunity to have a representative from ST Math come and speak with us. And she shared some of the things that they've seen that help schools do that really effectively are really the three recommendations up on the screen. So set some expectations, establish routines to monitor data, and then, our favorite, celebrate often and wildly. So just to speak really briefly to each of those, around the setting expectations, we have shared with our staff some of the guidelines around how much time, you know, should kids be spending on this, and teachers have been able to incorporate that into the schedule throughout the day, some ask their kids to do some of it for homework, but really just having an idea about how much time to spend. And then that translates over the course of the year to them finishing what's called their journey. So, our friend Gigi travels on a journey, and if you spend about this amount of time, you know, each week, you'll get to the end of the journey by the end of the year. So that's a nice way for kids to kind of be like, oh, we know we're 50% done with our journey, you know, in the middle of the year and so forth. As far as the establishing routines to monitor data, we're able to get some reports each week, just how things are going. But what's really exciting and what the kids are really aware of are the monthly challenges that our instructional TOSA team have put together. And so each month, they'll send out an email to all of the teachers and say, hey, this month, you know, we're, to earn your stickers, to earn your Gigi trophies, this is the challenge. And it varies each month, but that's something that they help us track, and the kids are proud of, and teachers have different ways of displaying that in their classrooms. These are some examples from around the schools. So, the bulletin board on the left is from State Road, just celebrating some of the classes that had reached those mile markers. And then the other one is from Schlegel, where we had some fun with the March Mathness theme, and paired up some of our teams of teachers and classes together to have a little friendly competition in the spirit of March and bracket competition and so forth. And so then for celebrating wildly, I mean, this is where we've really just had some fun. So, on this beautiful sunny sunrise morning, this is myself, and you can see my Assistant Principal, Mr. Cody Miller, holding up a laptop here, because I'm delivering our morning announcements outside with larger-than-life Gigi behind me, to just share some celebrations. And then over here, you see at Plank North, so that's their mascot of the pioneer, but then you also see the Penguin over here. And so, both mascots present to present to some children about their achievements in ST Math at a school-wide celebration. We celebrate Gigi's birthday in the elementary schools, and I actually, I wanted to just tell you what those little notes say. So, one of them says, "I kept trying to get it right. I got it right." And then the other one says, "This time when I was getting frustrated, Gigi helped me." So, setting some goals, and then just really getting into the spirit of, you know, this character and how Gigi plays into that. And then finally, a few more pictures. So you may have seen Gigi at Community Arts Day, but really just floated a bit around our schools last month, and visited students, visited with classes, and met families at Community Arts Day as well. Any questions? Pass it over to Paul.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
There you go.
Thank you. I love the ST Math, being a former math teacher. I can't believe I missed the opportunity of also being a basketball junkie of March Mathness.
I know it.
Oh, so cool. Very good. I'm just still perplexed about why the Penguin is the mascot. That's the only other question I have, but figure that out later. All right. I do want to take a quick minute and talk about culture and climate and belonging at our schools, the four secondary schools. And part of that is to thank the Board and the District Senior Cabinet for the previous capital project. We just finished Schrader's library in January, and I know all the libraries across the district have been renovated, and it's really brought a revitalization back to Schrader, at least, because that's where I'm at every day, and an academic environment for our students and staff. You'll see a picture or two up here in a little bit with the library. And I also want to say, I had lunch with a bunch of seniors last week, and I said, what's your favorite thing? And they said, the library is the favorite thing at school right now. And so, that meant a lot for them to kind of get back in there and with the academics. So thank you for the capital project and having that vision to bring back the library for us. And then on a side note, we've also had two UPK classes at Schrader, and it's brought just a different positive impact for our students and our staff. It's like, nobody could not have instant joy or a smile on their face when they see, you know, the backpack's bigger than the kids as they walk down the hallway. So it's been great. So, thank you very much for allowing us to do that. So for you visual learners, you're going to see some of the things that we talked about earlier from our student representatives, and along the way, you'll see a lot of the teamwork that we've been doing with, am I going the right way here?
Yeah, there was one more of those.
All right. With PTSA from all the different buildings. At Spry, again, we talked about culture and climate and belonging. So, a spring-fling dance, you know, getting the students together, having them socialize, hopefully without their phones. I don't see any phones in the picture just yet, but we want to make sure that they're talking and getting together with one another. And that also leads to clubs, like Chess Club. Look at this group here, First Place Finish from Spry Middle School, and also a recognition for Student Care Students of the Month, and you'll see that with, obviously, next slide with Willink too. Teaming up again with PTSA, who's been fantastic. And I learned that the Staff Appreciation is, with the Staff Appreciation, is Teacher Appreciation next week, so they want to include everybody. And so, then, we had another couple carts, because there's been such a pouring in of stuff for us, so thank you for that. But Locker Love was fantastic. Students came in, and were taking some pictures at the same time, kind of reading them. Just a little boost here and there helps. That was it for secondary buildings, so thank you, PTSA. And you can see, again, with at Willink, same sort of thing, student recognitions, adult students talking about their care work and the climate and culture that they've been establishing over at Willink, and a continued celebration, as they were earlier, with the ST Math. And those are recommendations that generally come in from, we do at the high school also, come in from staff members. It could be the smallest thing. It could be helping a teacher out, answer some questions, whatever it might be. But again, it's that, that day-in, day-out behaviors that rewards students, that make, hopefully, every little day a little bit better for everybody. This is my smorgasbord. I was doing this, and I'm like, do I want to do two slides or one? But I did two, because, I mean, I'm sorry, I did one, because we do so many things in common. I'm like, why am I going to do the same slide twice? And I also want to show the unity between Thomas and Schrader a little bit here. If you look in the far left, you probably heard about the Lockheed Martin, a lot of the Code Quest masterminds competitions are now going this spring, speech and debate over at Schrader this year. Again, they'll be sending students to Nationals and Memorial Day weekend. But just, this is a combined team of Thomas and Schrader here to earlier. You can see the students. We talked about AP College Board exams are this week and next week. Both schools are doing it. Most of them are at Thomas because of the Field House, but it is pretty serious, obviously, and we take them very seriously, and so do our students. So, that's what they're working on all year long. Again, joining with that, they were enjoying, we did ours on Friday, looking forward about the APs we thought we'd have, and it was a Friday, so we thought we'd do it on Friday for Decision Day. And you can see, I talked about the library earlier, it was just packed with students, and I think you might recognize a face down there, serving, always smiling, a little bit extra incentive there for Linda to be there, I bet, a little bit. But it was a great celebration. We had cake. We did have, by the way, we did have a veggie tray. There were a lot of carrots left. So, yeah, we did, yes, we did have them, made some carrot cake, I think, out of it. But it was a great celebration. A lot of pictures, this is one of hundreds of pictures that were taken of our students and where they're going. Now, we also had students wearing, I love this one where they have, you know, Gap, the store, they had Gap as a shirt on, because they're taking a gap year. And that's very common, and they, our counselors work with them and show them different programs they can go into in terms of, like, going and doing humanitarian work. And we also had students who were also wearing Army and Marines, a couple of our students. Again, PTSA up in the middle here, Earth Day, get some mud and put Stacy Peters together, and you got, like, next thing you got, like, a cornfield in your school. And that Stacy's doing a lot of great work with our students, and she goes and talks to our students during lunch to get them up and to work with it. The students love it. The chocolate didn't hurt either. Staff Appreciation Week, you already heard about that. And here's my newest, I just got my swag today for my Schrader flag football. And so, both Thomas and Schrader, if you don't know this, the NFL teams are supporting this, and so, Section Five and Six had their day over at, when they had their practices over in, Rich, I, Rich Tam, she says, old man, over in Buffalo Bills in their practice facility, and each team got their photo taken with them. They got to meet some of the players along the way. And they also donated jerseys, one set of jerseys to the team. We are undefeated, just so you know, right now. I don't think anybody's scored on us yet, but we have a game Friday night, so I'm looking forward to that. It is ball and prom season. We're very excited at the same time. It's one of those things that we do a lot of reminders of making good decisions. And that's when every, when students leave, that's all our administrative team says, make good decisions the rest of tonight. Have a good time and make good decisions. And they're usually phenomenal with that. You heard about Run the World in Eighty Days, and you also heard about Freaky Friday over at Thomas. This is the Jazz group right here that came in to perform last week. Again, that was a Thomas-Schrader joint effort. Link Crew, same thing. We do both, do Link Crew at both schools. We both have World Language Honor Society ceremonies, and we have five Honor Societies, if you didn't know that. National Honor Society also had that, World Language Honor Society. Other ones are doing in June and later on will be Business Honor Society, Art Honor Society, and Triumph Music Honor Society. So we have all that represented at both schools. So my thought for today was that I wanted to show that we do a lot of communication and collaboration, and are very similar in the activities that we do. It's kind of like teaching, you know, you've got the science of teaching, we do all these, and we have the art of how do we present it, and how do we celebrate our students along the way. I think that's it.
All right. Thank you both, very, very much. And first of all, I'd like to say, I love Gigi. Obviously, when you go around, and we've been around on many visits, we get to see things, Gigi in action, I guess, if you will. And definitely, it does my heart good to see that slide with Thomas and Schrader together, and I know Willink and Spry as well. But it's symbolic, the nature of that slide, but so important of how many things overlap between our two high schools and working together. We're a better team when we're working together. So thank you, Paul, for doing, putting it together that way. And in just a few minutes, you're going to hear more about the upcoming budget vote from our Assistant Superintendent, Brian Freeman. But I want to wrap up my report with an important reminder that please remember to exercise your right to vote on the proposed twenty-two, or excuse me, 2023-24 budget, and to elect two Board of Education members on Tuesday, May 16th. Polls will be open from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM at the Webster-Schrader High School gym. Thanks, Paul, for hosting us, as always, located at 875 Ridge Road. And also, one last thing, be sure to watch your UPS, or USPS, United States Postal Mail, for a budget newsletter that will be mailed to all district homes later this week and posted on our website at websterschools.org/budget. And that ends my report. Thank you very much. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I just to reiterate, when we do the safety hearing, we're going to motion to open the hearing, we're going to have our discussion. We have Neil here and Brian, and then we'll close it once we're done with our discussion and our questions. And we'll do the same thing for the public budget hearing. So, just a reminder. Right? I said, right? Okay. So, to open it up, I need a motion to open the safety plan hearing, so we can hear from Neil and Brian and have any questions. So moved Shanna, Second. Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're open.
Hello. How are we doing?
Hi.
So, every year, as you know, we have to do a public hearing for the district-wide emergency safety plan. They're different from the building-level plans. The only change to the plan this year is the state required us to add some language about data privacy. So Brian Zimmeri added two sections in the report on data privacy. They're reasonably short, because he has an extensive plan that's a more confidential document that he has, that we keep, that's really detailed about all the things for data privacy. But this is a touch the base on what the state asks us to do. The state has this new thing now, when they don't know what to do with anything, they make us put it in the safety plan. Like online education was last year, and Aaron wrote eight or 10 pages worth of things. This year, it's the data privacy, so it is what it is. But other than that, there's really been no changes. Questions?
And just as a reminder, tonight's hearing opens up the required 30-day comment period. So for 30 days, the community can comment, they can email anyone, Neil, write on the website, comments, and then in June, we'll come back with the finalized plan for final adoption with any comments that we collected over the 30 days.
I mean, it's a 112-page document, and we've always made, you guys always make sure that we have one of the best security plans around, so thank you.
Thank you.
We've actually, I've actually received a couple of phone calls from districts in New York State about our plan, which I found kind of surprising and interesting. So, but a lot of districts, they don't have the resources to have a director, so, you know, a poor Assistant Superintendent's trying to add this to the list of 5,000 other things he has to do, and it's pretty difficult. Most districts in Monroe County now have a person, but a lot of school districts don't.
And the foresight, looking to see, like, in the future, like, what do we need to do now, you know, anticipating what could be risks in the future, so that we're prepared now. You guys do a great job with that.
Well, if I could accurately answer that question, I wouldn't be sitting here, because I'd be out making more money than I knew what to do with.
But you do a great job with that.
I, after-school activities and those kind of events still keep me up at night. They always will. However, we have had some conversation recently with the music people, and Officer Hurley's here, but we had some conversation about maybe having our SROs be at large concerts. Kaleidoscope at Thomas, there's 900 people there. That might be something that we might want them present for. But it's, they're public buildings. At some point in time, after 3:15 or 3:30, and they're open, and you have a basketball game, you have 500, 600 people, you know, it's, there's unpredictability in everything we do. I mean, statistically, still, schools are still safer than public places like malls and movie theaters. I don't think, parents believe that's true, but that is what is the statistical truth. But, and one incident is one too many. So.
Well, we could ask our school resource office to be in, be in the place. I mean, that could be something that we do. How about, oh, we did, oh, he was! He was in the play this year.
I think they need to work on their timing for their line delivery, according to, according to a well-placed other Hurley.
That's right, that's right.
A young Hurley.
He did great, and thank you for doing that.
But it was, it was great at Dave DeVolante's time.
It really was. It was the-
Four different times.
Huge, huge hit with the kids.
Yeah.
It was. It is. All about that relationship building, too.
This is the first time I looked at this, and I cannot believe how thorough it is, how everything is covered, how well it's written. And I want to say that I feel in safe hands with you and in charge of it.
Thank you. You know, we have a good team. And frankly, the district's support has been awesome, physically from Brian through projects and whatever budgetarily was, if things I've needed, I haven't had to ask twice. So that's, makes a big difference, because I know some districts struggle with funding for security, and that's a big problem for them, and we've been pretty supportive, very supportive. And it makes a big difference.
I agree.
As we look at the weather, high winds and the likelihood of a power outage seems more and more likely. Are we good with all of our generators for critical functions?
Well, yes and no. The, we're certainly taking a long, hard look at the generators. Part of that's a function of the fact that we've put a lot of LED lighting in, so that drops the load. So we're going to, we're asking Labella's electrical engineers to come back in and take a look at how we could redistribute. And also, we're taking a look at, in the future, do we look at replacing some of the generators? We have an agreement right now with the Red Cross as a shelter for Schrader, and also, at one point in time, Spry. I don't, they've been back and forth with Spry. I think they'd want to come back here now that the addition is complete. Those buildings would need generators big enough to power most of the building, the bathrooms, the kitchens, all that. The elementary schools, we really need a generator. The generator will run long-term, but we really need to keep some lights on, the phones working, the computers working, until we're in a point in time where we can get kids home. Assuming that, you know, the only thing that would change that might be a blizzard, and we know when those are coming, so Brian and his staff usually take action to get kids home prior to it becoming bad. But high winds are something that we struggled with in the last windstorm some, so we're taking a look at that.
Right. And that, that scenario, when you take a step back and look at everything, with that pervasive of power outages, we wouldn't need generators at the buildings, except for Schrader, if it became like a warming center with the Red Cross, because we wouldn't be utilizing it, you know? We'd button them up and wait till the power came back on in the community. So the generators wouldn't really be useful in those scenarios. We're looking for, you know, functional, operational, till we could get kids out of the building safely, for whatever reason. If it's isolated, you know, Dwyer Road goes down, you know, and they're going to tell us it's not going to be back up for eight hours, you know, and then we start having those conversations of, okay, what time is it? Oh, yeah, we could wait two hours till dismissal. Generator will take the load for that, versus it's nine in the morning, you know, let's have a conversation about if it's not coming back, if we can't maintain temperature, maybe we have to make different decisions. So.
It's something we're looking at, though.
We all know how fortunate we are to have Mr. Flood in the position he's in, Officer Hurley, Mr. Cox, and your team. You guys have an amazing team, and we are definitely very fortunate to have you in the roles that you're in.
And we can't forget Officer Hurley's partner, Officer Ambrosiety.
Yes, Officer Ambrosiety, absolutely. And all the rest that aren't here tonight.
Remus to not mention him.
Absolutely. We're fortunate to have that. So, Dr. Flood, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Since we have the 30 days, so wait comment from the public. With that, can I have a motion to close the safety plan hearing, now that our questions have been addressed? So moved Mike, Second Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
Same process for the budget hearing. So, can I have a motion to open the public budget hearing for the 2023-24 school year?
You want to step around?
So moved Carol, Second Jen, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Flood.
All right. Time for the public budget hearing. So, a little bit of a recap. So, just wanted to start with this quote, "The future depends on what we do in the present." I think this is the thought process that I go into every kind of budget seizing. Even though, you know, we're focusing on 23-24, it's really thinking about, all right, setting up a budget for next year that has implications five years down the road, six years, seven years, eight years. What does that look like? What are the decisions we're making today? What's that impact going to look like? Because, you know, we've talked about this before, you know, the economy's cyclical in New York State. We know there's highs and there's lows, and, you know, it's planning for the rainy day. So as we're setting things up, you know, thinking about the future, does this make sense now for the future? So, I thought I'd start with that as part of our agenda. You know, we're just going to review the process, our timeline, the budget accomplishments, go over the particulars with the three-part budget, and the revenues and the propositions that we have up for vote. So, just to review, we started our process in November. Through December, we began it with guidelines, forecasts, and formulas developed, straight through tonight to the budget hearing. budget hearing, you know, we had three workshops, all that information can be found online, and, you know, really focusing in on that thought exchange in January, where we're still getting more feedback and use out of using the thought exchange for public input than any other medium we've ever done before, so it's still a very valuable resource. So some of our budget guidelines that we set out was to work within the tax cap, maintaining our small class size, preserve all those previously added positions that we've gone over in the past few fiscal years, support the instructional continuum, K-12, continue to utilize the remaining federal funds to supplement the budget process, use data on instructional and operational programs to assist in budget development, preserve the fiscal integrity for years to come, and always looking at things for efficiencies. Am I hitting something? I feel like there's feedback, I don't... Okay, we're trying to figure that out, still to be determined. So what did we accomplish in this budget? A lot of good things. We preserved all the positions that we've added through federal funds, so we could say that everything that was added as part of the federal programming is now in our budget and there and for continuity. Elementary class size reduction continued where possible, we talked about that lump at fourth grade, able to smooth that out. The positions for special education continuum, the NL staffing increase, the increase for professional development funding, and then the funding for centralized cultural arts, enrichment, instructional programming, additional RTI funding, the instructional technology funding for the new cabling project, the CTE funding for the new visions program, the additional school nurse positions, were the last part of the federal stimulus to switch over. Some additional funding for athletics and co-curricular, we talked about how we're really seeing the cost increases there more than anywhere, and we're no longer utilizing reserves to make the balanced budget, so that is a huge win financially moving forward, and we are tax cap compliant, so just need the simple majority on the budget vote this year. A note about wrapping up for federal stimulus funding, I know Mrs. Landon and myself in the last two weeks have sat through the first round of audits from New York State on this. We had four hours set aside, but it only took us an hour and a half, because we had most of our ducks in a row, and the rest of the ducks should be following soon. So, this is the Second CARES Act, there's three federal funding pieces, the first one is long said, done since 2020. This one is also called, like the Esser might hurt it, it's the second stimulus funding. We're allocated about 7.9 million, that one ends September 30th, 2023. Those fundings were summer and after-school programs, the new Encore program, ENL expansion, and learning recovery. So all funds from this grant are now part of the ongoing operation budget moving forward. So any people associated with that is moving forward. The last grant is the American Recovery Plan, the ARP, that has one more year to go, that ends September 30th, 2024. So the three-part budget is unique as part of the budget hearing. Nowhere else in New York State do we actually have to report the budget this way, or any of our financial data, it's only this way for the budget hearing and for our budget newsletter. So the three parts are the administrative program and capital. The administrative is, you think, all back office, central services, support areas, as well as building administration, that is that budget. Program is, you think of everything with direct instruction of students, including transportation. And then capital, facilities maintenance, debt services, and transfers to capital. Those are, so we have to break it down this way. So if you look, here is our three-part with, as a graph, with the program being the largest at 78.2% for this year, capital being 14.8, and then the administrative section at 7% of the budget. So what's the administrative, line by line? Like you said, it's a 2.68% increase, all these areas. The one thing that also makes the three-part budget a little bit different is that benefits need to be applied to all three areas based on what staff members are in that budget. So for instance, you know, the administrative budget, superintendent, district clerk, all the business office, all the human resources department, all the people in that, their benefits have to come over and be applied to this budget as well. It is a formula that you do, it's not looking up everybody, it's kind of, you take the whole piece of the benefits pie and parse it out by how many people and how many salaries are in that. So that's the one little unique thing that kind of, you know, makes the different three parts, not, you know, nice, clean, easy numbers, because that benefits calculation is a, is a ratio, is the best way to put it. And then on the program budget, I think you can see a lot of the accomplishment we have, have direct links to the program budget. You know, curriculum, there's the increase in professional development, the overall increase in instruction with the class size initiative, the special education programming that we're looking at with the increases there, the increase for the new visions, you know, the increase in computer-assisted instruction is the cabling, student services is the pupil services is the nurses coming onboard, moving over the athletics, you see the increase there because of their costs, and then, you know, the benefits assigned for all the people that are associated with the program budget. So you could see that reference back to our accomplishments, to the costs over here. And then the smallest part is the capital budget, just a couple notes about that. Maybe, oh, I don't know, I thought of... The smallest group is the capital budget. Just remember, as a refresher, you see the debt service is going up here, but remember, we're also getting a significant uptick in building aid, so as one goes up, so does the other, we keep those in line, so you'll see that when we talk about revenue, but just as a reminder. And then, this is how we actually report to the state, so I wanted to break that down. These are the areas we send to the state where the district expenses are, is the best way to say it, so we report our debt as debt, we report all our benefits together, all transportation expenses, you know, all these categories is how we actually report every fall, all of our expenses. So these are the breakdowns by area where that comes, and you can see, you know, where those major areas, it's instruction, it's benefits, special education are some of the largest reporting areas that we do. My favorite slide, though, is this one, because we also report to the state the what district expenses are, so the where in the budget they are, but what is it? So if you really take four things and add them all up, salaries, benefits, BOCs, and our debt, that's 93.5% of our budget, is really in four, four areas, so that gives us 6.5% on everything else. So when you think about it, utilities, like, you know, leaving the lights on, you know, they're just very, very small, tuition, supplies that we purchase, very, very small parts of the budget, when you look at the, the whole picture of the pie, so that's why I like this slide. So this is how we report to the state of what it is we're spending our money on. So overall, what our total budget is, about 4.4% increase over '22-23, and that is about $8.5 million increase over '22-23, and I ran some county averages, because we are on the low end of the increases this year. And I think, I wanted to unpack that a little bit more, because we were ahead of the curve going all the way back, I think, to 2021 with some of our budgeting. We got out in front of a couple items, especially on the mental health piece, we started adding mental health before a lot of other districts did, and I think what this shows is, you know, we've leveled off, we've added, we've accomplished a lot with this budget, but I think you're seeing some districts, the county average is a 5.8% increase, which is $6.2 million on average, and of course, I've removed RCD because that's a significant outlier, so just looking at the county schools. We, I think, why are we in the bottom? We got a large influx of aid, but I think, you know, we've, we've added, but we've done it on a progressive type of scale, you know, with, okay, we've looked K1 and added there. This year, we're looking at the fourth grade for small class size and even that out, so we've kind of done it a little bit more, I won't say thoughtfully, but judiciously, so we don't need a huge, you know, almost 10% increase to kind of catch up, because we've done that over time. So I think that's what plays out here, and I wanted to, you know, get that message across of, you know, we're the second-largest district, but have the four smallest budget increase this year, when you look at the data here.
Tax cap and having to need, was it two-thirds?
Uh, no one.
No one?
No one is.
So it's the foundation aid?
It's the foundation aid, and, you know, there is districts that were owed more money than us, and it's all proration compared to size, some districts, you know, got close to $8, $9 million in foundation aid increases, so, in comparative to, you know, there's, there was districts with, you know, less than 3,000 kids that were getting, you know, $7, $7.5 million foundation aid increases, they hadn't seen that before, so this, this would correlate to the increase in budgets, because you could do a lot more than they ever have.
Thank you.
So our state fiscal data that gets reported as part of the process and is available for the budget hearing, I've linked it, this will be on the website, this is really based on 2020-21 financial data. What our averages are, our per pupil is 18,481, county average is a little higher than that, and the state average is 23,468, so, pretty decent per pupil expenditure average, considering we have two high schools and two middle schools, that usually creates some issues on the per pupil expenditure when you look at districts with multiple high schools. So next up is the revenues, what do those look like? First off, let's talk state aid updates. You know, actually, by the time I uploaded this, we didn't have a budget yet, kind of did have a framework on 4/28, but we weren't really sure, and details were pretty thin. Actually got our state aid runs this afternoon to take a look at. It looks like at first blush, no changes to our numbers that we talked about in the budget workshops, nothing earth-shattering has come out, still haven't seen the details behind, like UPK or some of the other items and some of the other formulas, so I think, but we have a solid basis that the numbers that the governor released and that we've benchmarked on were pretty accurate and were good to go. So, just as a reminder, this was the final year that foundation aid phase in, this was our largest year-to-year increase since '08-'09, with $5.7 million. So we are still planning on the required set-aside provision, it looks like that is not going to be as part of the budget, but more details on that, it looks like that got left out, but we don't have confirmation on that quite yet. You know, like you said, we got the big increase in building aid in line with the debt service, other state revenue is pretty flat, and then UPK allocation, I just, that reminder, until we see what happens there and get that back up, I just checked before four o'clock, that we didn't have the back up to see if that per pupil allocation was increased. So, we're hopeful, we might have gotten a little, you know, glimmer of hope that it was gonna be there, but not sure quite yet, so, you know, that fake money, as I described in the earlier workshop, the seats that we'll never use that they've allocated to us. So there's our revenues overall, you see the extra state aid above and beyond that foundation aid is the building aid increase, and then you could see, we're no longer reliant on any kind of reserves, we've zeroed that out, that has tremendous impact fiscally for us moving forward, not having to rely on that, but we're still committed to the appropriated fund balance, and just as a refresher, where does appropriated fund balance come from? That's just money that's been set aside over years and targeted to reduce our levy. So our property tax levy over the years could be, could have been $5.5 million higher, or we could have had $5.5 million less of something else, and it looks like the formatting on the screen kind of got messed up, and a zero got carried down below, I apologize for that. So those are our revenues in total, should be very similar to what we had in Workshop Three. '21 through '23 is just the contingent budget information to refresh and review, so what happens if voters do not approve the budget? So the board has two options, can seek another vote in June with whatever, and honestly, whatever number you want to put down for a budget, could be the same, could be different, could be more, could be less, it's really a wide open, whatever decisions that want to be made, or you can immediately implement the contingent budget after the first vote, so you could have another vote or go right to contingent. What really is the contingent budget cap? That's based on the tax levy limit, so what the law says now is the tax levy cannot be greater than the prior year, must remain at what it is right now, that $1,616,818,533. But some expenditure items have to come out of the budget, so like equipment lines, free use of facilities, a few other things, they all have to come out in proportionality, so the administrative percentage that you saw, that 7%, no matter what we do, has to stay in balance from the prior year. So that's where we have, would have to reduce things to keep that percentage in line, but the overriding thing is must ensure health and safety of students, staff, and preserve the property of the district under a contingent budget. So our calculation of what we'd have to pull out to maintain that would bring the budget down to 201923, because we're pulling out about $2.5 million in necessary reductions, so we'd have to, because of reverting back to last year's levy, we'd have a loss of 2.8, so the difference between what we would pull out and the tax levy leaves us $326,570, we'd need to come up with that if that's the number we wanted to go to. Theoretically, also, you know, that 2.5 keeps us in the ratio, but that could be made up of anything, that would, you know, as long as we stay in the ratio, you know, we, it could be any combination of items, it, just as long as it was definitely equipment and free, free use of facilities are must-haves. So that's what the contingent budget would look like. And then lastly are the propositions. First one up is the capital outlay that we have to advertise, this is the transfer to capital. Next year, the allocation is going to State Road Elementary School, we're looking to replace the gutter, gutter replacement around the building, and then possibly we'll do an alternative ceiling and lighting upgrades if the bid costs allow, transfer in the $100,000. Normally, we would do, these are projects we do in-house, but we will outsource these so we can get the building aid of $75,000. It's required by SED to have a slide in there about that, and this is the big one, because you'll see it later in the board business of why we've been harping on this, this makes sense, currently legislation to expand it, not sure if that came through or not, so I just wanted to make mind everybody on that one, too. Next proposition is our buses, we've talked about those before, you know, a little bit different with the half buses this year, because we desperately need the wheelchair-accessible buses, we cannot get those in the mini buses, which we saw this year, they were canceled on us, so we're moving to the half buses for next year to, to make that move. And then the board candidates, when you flip over, to vote on, two individuals for three-year terms appear in the ballot in the order below based on the random drawing, so we have these four individuals running for the board. Vote reminder, I could skip this, because Mr. Nenan already put that out there for everybody as part of his. I've linked the webpage that we'll put out there where everything is, every budget presentation, every budget document is all on that landing page, so, open up to questions.
If the capital outlay project increases, do we have a thought of what we would do beyond just State Road?
So it has to be, no matter what, they would never change, it's gotta be per building.
Oh, per building, okay.
So they wouldn't, that's pretty well documented in the original legislation, that it has to be at one building, so like you couldn't take 100 here and then a... So like you couldn't take 100 here and then another 150 someplace else. It would be 250 at State Road.
Okay.
And we'd have plenty of.
You have plenty, okay.
Plenty of things at State Road to do.
Okay, thank you.
Proposition one for the buses. I know that when we had an audit, they, you know, we're looking at kind of decreasing our fleet.
Yep.
So did you take that into, and they were kind of at two different times. So I don't know if that was taken into consideration at all with the.
Taken into consideration was the basic turnover of what we do every year. So five big buses go out, come in new, five would go out, the five oldest ones. But we are going to outsize, out, you know, get rid of, in surplus and scrap, a few more based on that recommendation. We don't trade them in, we scrap them because we beat them up pretty good that the metal is worth more than anything else.
And then Brian, really quick on the, the contingency budget.
Yep.
So it looks like there's certain things that were required to remove if the budget, if we go to a contingency. So I just want to be clear on that. So when it says here that equipment lines, like we have to remove equipment lines, what does that mean?
So anything that the buildings have budgeted for or any of the departments to like new school furniture, anything like that could. Yeah, science equipment, it all goes. The only equipment that would stay would be anything that we could justify as health and safety.
Okay, and then.
So like a plow truck, we could probably get away with because if one of ours breaks down, that's a health and safety, we kind of need to replace that. But buying new desks that were planned for, new cafeteria tables would be pulled out.
Okay. And then when it says free use of facilities, so does that mean that we can't, the public can't use?
No, they could use it, but the user agreements we have, like with the town and with U Sports, we have, you know, like a three tiered system for Webster organizations. That would be collapsed into one tier and with a different, with an actual rate where it's no subsidization by the district.
Any other questions?
Brian, just a comment, great job keeping us below the county average per pupil and yet getting all the services we need to maintain.
I have to thank the stakeholder groups that helped build the budget.
So very well done.
Friends on the instructional side.
You know, for what we're, we're still ranked and, you know, very highly in the state, in the nation for schools. So keeping that high output with the fact that our expenditures per student is low means you're doing a good, you know, we're doing, guys are doing a good job with taxpayers' money and the output. So I definitely think that's fantastic.
So then I just linked to show you what's up there on the budget page. We have our school report card, state aid from NISID. And then every workshop, all the documents, everything we've gone over is living right here for ease of access on the landing page. Soon to go up, oh, Krista got it up already, the budget newsletter.
Yep.
Is hitting up there and then this hearing presentation will also go up there tonight.
Are you going to meet with any of the PTSAs?
Going to PTSA on Thursday night.
Okay, for the central meeting?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Did transportation group today, we're doing faculty meetings tomorrow, Friday, buildings and grounds. And then I forget who else is next week. We have a couple more.
Now tech, we were going to do that, but yeah.
No other questions?
And then just to point out, I also have the COVID federal funding landing page that was linked earlier under federal stimulus. It has every document we have submitted to the state and all the amendments and what our plans are and all sitting right there.
It's pretty thorough, thank you.
Very thorough.
All right.
Lots of time.
I have a motion to close the public budget hearing now that all questions have been addressed. So moved Charlie, second Linda, all in favor. Hi. Thank you. Capital outlay bid acceptance.
So yeah, perfect, perfect segue to talking about that capital outlay. Because as you could see, when we opened a bid on Friday, you could see by, we had two bidders. So these capital outlay projects are not, is becoming attractive at the $100,000 level. Sorry, I broke it. So you could see by when we opened the bids, how it would have worked perfectly in a larger allocation. That $100,000 is just getting us the base work at Trader that we want. So we had two bidders, we've, RB Mac was the lowest, we're going to accept their base bid. We unfortunately in $100,000 can't do the alternate. But they have done great work for us in the past on the elementary level. So wholeheartedly endorse to approve them as the lowest responsible bidder for this.
So since they can't do both, what's going to happen to the case?
We're just, can't do it.
But it's not in a position to ask to be done right away?
Correct, yeah. Nice too. The door is the most important thing.
They update it to 250 this?
So that would be for the State Road. It wouldn't be retro, it would be moving forward.
Okay.
Mine's blank, we do, right? Okay, it was blank, I thought we did, okay. Any other questions? Motion to approve the capital outlay bid acceptance. So moved Carol, second Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First Berkshire Tax Cert approval.
Yes, that's the formal name. Most of you probably remember it as the old McDonald's in the village.
Ah, yes, that's right.
So if you remember, we were looking at this and we actually thought we had a proposed settlement last year, but some discrepancies at the last minute, so we had to table that. So we've come back now and have a, a good deal under the proposed settlement. We do not have to pay refunds on this one, which is always a benefit. And just moving their assessment down a little bit moving forward for 23, 24. So this in agreement with the town to move forward with this assessment reduction and approve the completion of the tax archery.
Questions?
So it's a separate assessment for school taxes and town taxes?
No.
Okay.
Same assessed value, we just all get lumped in. And so when a tax archery goes through, it's, it's really against the school, the county, the town, village.
So everybody has to agree.
Yeah.
All right. Motion to approve the resolution to settle the tax cert proceedings commenced by First Berkshire in accordance with the terms set forth as approved by Farrar Forenza. So moved Mike, second Shanna, all in favor?
Aye.
Gold tax.
So the gold property on 1170 Ridge Road, for, just to get your bearings on that one, that's the one across from the Jiffy Lube Nail Salon, Rochester Hearing Center. So this property, we will have some refunds to pay. You know, the property was recently sold, so there is nothing more accurate to talk about the assessed value than what the sale price was. So when that happened, that, you know, left a pretty strong indication of where the assessed value should be. So that's where we are.
Okay. Questions about that one? All right, motion to settle the tax cert proceedings commenced by goal investments in accordance with the terms set forth as approved by Farrar Forenza. So moved Carol, second Jen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Secra resolution.
Next up, this is the seeker that we have to do for all the capital projects. So even the $100,000 one. So this is for in preparation for the State Road, getting just our ducks in a row. The state, this has to go with the state paperwork, the minutes and approval that we're doing this. So we could get that, get that approved and get it done next year. I do have an addendum here just in case, just so some wording, in case it does change, we're able to do that without having to redo the process. So I think we're, we are covered there. I did get the attorney's thoughts on that and they said we'd be good to go, should that change after effect.
Any other questions? All right, motion to approve the seeker resolution for 2324 capital outlay project. So moved Mike, second Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
Winter capital project updates.
So I'll just leave it for questions. You know, Ed, it's just an update of what we did in the winter. Not a lot of work, just plugging along on some things over the breaks at Willink to get done. Some punch list items at the elementary school. So I think pretty much just an update, actually this week, we finally got the electric hooked up for the scoreboard at Thomas. Trader should be within the next three to four days. And then we could start training and playing around with it and get it used. Hopefully with some nice weather, it's not raining and cloudy. So any questions on anything on the capital project update?
Questions, just, it's amazing.
Yeah, those boards are pretty nice.
I'm going to buy a library pickles like this when I was in school.
Yeah, and I'm glad Mr. Benz brought that up in his report. Because to me, the front, it's changed the dynamic at Trader. It's made it so like when you come in inviting, and I don't feel like it's 1992 anymore when I walk in there. It has, you know, it's, it's gotten a refresh and I think it's so beneficial to the kids and staff over there.
Yeah.
These boards will look really nice when you're showing the graduation up on the screen. It's just going to be so much more.
Yep.
Yeah. And they've definitely created a place that makes you want to gather and that's what we want. We want kids to be gathering, especially around books in the library and get them in that environment.
Met with Sean Streggy, I think he's gotten 15 requests to use it for different things before the power is even hooked up.
Wow.
That's funny.
None of it's to like watch a football game or.
Nope, some very creative ideas.
And that's it for you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
No problem, thank you.
We have the second reading of the 2324 Board of Ed calendar, nothing changed, so we're good with that. Oh, do you guys? Oh, sorry.
Isn't there something we have to sign? Wasn't there one sheet? Okay, I must have read that wrong.
No worries. All right, so motion to approve the second reading of the 2324 Board of Ed calendar. So moved, so moved Shanna, second Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's all set. Wow. All right, I'm going to start to my left today with board member highlights. So we're going to go this way and see, I know again, everyone covers everything so nicely early on, but if there's anything else, Charlie, we're going to go this way?
Just had the, the privilege of going to the jazz concert last week. It's great to see both schools working together. It's, it was a phenomenal performance, it was very intimate with the performer, working with the students. It's nice, nice to have that too.
I went to the, I went to the information exchange, Brian was there too. And what was interesting is they presented all the ways boards could work to improve the operations of the actual board. And every single moment I saw that you guys have got it covered. Especially the way you provide, we get that letter telling us what's happening. You meet twice a month, some people don't meet even monthly to get their stuff together. So after it, I felt like I learned more from being on this board than I did actually at the information exchange, except for to know that we're, we're spot on. So that was good.
Cool.
Yeah, thank you.
I think just real simple, the, the two elementary PTSAs are flush with cash and they're looking for ways to spend the money. And, and hopefully they're spending it on the fifth graders in both as they move on. But it's great. The school spirit is just so evident as we walk around and so refreshing now, see everybody excited.
That's the fun part, right?
Sorry. Just for the board members, Mono County School Boards is having their, it's like a social hour on Wednesday. I sent that to everybody. And also the annual meeting is going to be on the 24th and I sent that to everybody as well. So.
Just wanted to, I agree with Carol on the information exchange. You know, and they also talked about which were, you know, how important it is each year to redo the training between the board roles and the superintendent roles. Just like that refresher training always helps new members, helps existing members. I thought that was, we did that, it gets great, we should keep that up. And then Freaky Friday was amazing, you know, definitely shows you.
It was.
You know, we're voted one of the best music districts, you can see why, they do such a great job with it. So it's great, the luminary walk's coming up, so they'll be sending out volunteers sheet for that. And then obviously, you know, the staff appreciation this weekend, next week.
Covered everything.
Everything's covered.
All right, so with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. So unless there's any questions about anything in there, pretty good. Kind of a motion then to approve the consent agenda. So moved Jen, second Linda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, that's good. All right, we move on to our public speaking portion. I believe we have Mr. Ruiz up here for his four minutes.
So quickly on the budget, I've said this last year, I think it's, just always seems that it just is. Well, first I appreciate it, doesn't sound too bad, 2.4%, but it's the spending, nine million, 8.9 million more. And as you notice, well, we got, you stated some things, we got more nurses, we got more. It's the nature of government agencies, just to grow and grow and grow. So that, that's going to always be problematic. I figured out that a child going into kindergarten this coming September, by the time he gets into high school freshman year, will be a $300 million budget, a 50% increase, if we do the current increase. So it's, yeah, so I just, at some point I would like to see some slowdown or some, you know, but I'd like to see more questioning, like the nurses was, was an old one. Where it just, well, you want four nurses, here's four nurses. And it's never a cutback, you know, sometimes we have, thankfully we haven't needed that. But it's just a general thought, there's just always more, in, in every department, in every way. And it's, you know, in every, all governments are doing it, everything. So, but anyway, thank you for your work and presentation on that. You know, people say it takes a village to raise a child. And partly I would also add that that should not supersede the parent. So part of my concern tonight is parental involvement and how much is it being allowed? And how much is it being overridden by, by government input? Because what you do here is you have some leeway, a lot of it comes from Albany, a lot of it comes from Washington. My question is always, when it comes, do you like it or do you nourish it? Or do you, would you, if you could find a way around it, would you, you know, would you change it? For instance, a while back, one of our, the doctor from the family engagement, he, he had a statement that was a little bit shocking. You even looked at it and nodded your head, you questioned it because he, he was talking about authority, where it comes from and the need for somebody to, to, to give kids rules or regulations or what you do with them. But he said central authority and the connection between the home and the school afforded to help manage behavior before. So the home and the school were one. And, and that, he said that's gone now. He says it doesn't exist anymore. I'm like, well, wait a minute, I understand, yeah, perhaps, you know, city schools, marriages, I mean, have dissolved and, 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 and things like that. But I, I'm not sure that's a problem here in Webster where families no longer have that connection. But he went on to say that, so everything is broken down, but here, here we are, DEI to the rescue. You know, it's a little bit like that. Here we are, the schools to the rescue because parents are lacking. So that, you get, you're giving, anyways, I appreciate the look because that's, you did give a little bit of like, did he just say what he said? But he did. But that's, that's normal, that's, that's pervasive for some of the attitudes that's going on. It's exemplified too, like for instance, you're reviewing the, the board, the board policies. There was only one policy there regarding parental involvement. It had to do with looking into teachers' resumes or something and you did away with it. You know, again, I talked with Dave and he says, look, it rarely comes up and we'll do it anyways if someone asks. But why not have a policy in there just as a backup? Because most of your other, a lot of your other policies are backups also. You're doing it anyway. So that, you know, but nobody batted an eye when the only parental one, it was booted out. And secondly, the other. And, secondly, the other thing is, I heard the teachers are being told that, yeah, thanks. The other one was, you know, this is a rare issue, but dener just for you, the teachers are being told, don't you dare call a parent on this, and the reason is, because, you know, maybe they're strict, and maybe they got too much religion, or, you know, religious views that would inhibit the best thing for the child. That's, that's the other issue that, that's come up.
Okay, thank you.
So, blessings on the vote and the elections, and Mike, if I don't see you again on the board, I thank you for everything, and happy retirement from the board.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Right. We pride ourselves on parent involvement, we always want to include parents, and I think we do a pretty good job of that, but we appreciate your feedback. With that, kind of a motion to adjourn the meeting. So moved, second, Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.